Okay, I call to order the redevelopment agency meeting. The first item of business, approve the minutes of September 13th, 2017, and October 5th, 2017, as presented. Councilmember Newton?
I move to approve.
We have a motion by Board Member Newton and a second by Board Member Burton. Discussion of the motion? See none, let's vote.
Board Member Anderson?
Yes.
Board Member Jacob?
Yes.
Chair Rolf?
Yes.
Board Member Nichols?
Yes.
Board Member Burton?
Yes.
Board Member Newton?
Yes.
Vote passes six in favor.
Business item 2B, approve resolution number 201 regarding a parameters and reimbursement authorizing the issuance and sale of not more than $7 million aggregate principal amount of economic development revenue bonds of the redevelopment agency of West Jordan. David Oka?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair and Board Members. Since this is a finance issue, Dave Zildel will address this issue.
Mr. Zildel.
Thanks Chairman and Board. As you're aware, we've been talking about this a little bit, so what we have in front of us is the beginning of the financing as we move forward. So there's a parameters resolution and as well as a reimbursement resolution because we may need to purchase this before the bonds could be sold, so that's why we have both of those in the agenda piece. Along with that, coming up in the regular council meeting, we'll have a contribution resolution which will speak about, you know, moving, if you will, if necessary, some sales tax over into the RDA to backstop these bonds if the lease doesn't cover that, so. And if you'd like, we also have Blake Wade here with us from Gilmore Bell, and so if you have any questions of that nature, he's here to answer them as well.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Motion would be in order. Board Member Newton?
Mayor, I move that we, or Chairman, I move that we approve resolution number 201.
Second.
We have a motion by Board Member Newton, a second by Board Member Anderson. Discussion to the motion. See none, let's vote.
Board Member Newton?
Hi.
Board Member Anderson?
Yes.
Board Member Jacob?
Yes.
Board Member Nichols?
Note.
Chair Rolf?
Yes.
Board Member Burton?
Yes.
The vote passes five to one.
I move to adjourn the redevelopment agency meeting and convene the city council meeting of October 25th, 2017.
Second.
I have a motion by Chair Rolf, a second by Board Member Newton. Discussion to the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
I call back to order the city council meeting of October 25th, 2017. First item will be a pledge of allegiance that tonight will be led by Connor Atherton from Troop 182... 187, sorry.
Will the audience please rise? Repeat the pledge of allegiance after me. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The audience may be seated.
In the interest of time, I would take a point of personal attention, move the communications to our staff at the end of the meeting, and we will move to the citizens' comments. I have several signed up to speak. They will be first. Alexandra Efremo.
Mayor and council, I want us to please start counting my blessings, so for one minute, we all in this room are going to be in a silent one-minute meeting to please count our blessings. I am, Ed Riding, I mean Riding, on our candidate night. He said he believes in communicating, however, I called him to ask him, why did he put three illegal signs on West Jordan property? He hung up on me. Now, that is not communication, but that's what he said at the candidate night. Plus, he went ahead, and I attended the, I mean, Jordan School District meeting, and Riding was there, plus a man by the name of Mike Anderson, and I got a call from the police department that I, Ed Riding accused me of, said Mike Anderson accused me of taking Riding signs. It's a lie. It's a lie. And in my opinion, I wanted to state it for the record that Ed Riding is a liar. When you don't tell the truth, you are a liar. Sorry, Mr. Nichols, he is a liar. And one thing more, y'all, I pray it never happens again. We have 90 people in here. It is warm. You started your closed session at 5:00, and I represent, I'm sorry, this is not acceptable as a citizen of West Jordan, and I'm talking for 90 people here in this room. You could have stopped it at 6:00, had the council meeting, then go and reconvene again in your closed-door session. This is abominable. I pray it never happens again. When you have a closed session, okay, but it's on black and white. The council meeting starts at 6:00, not 6:30. I'm sorry, Mr. Brickie, this was not acceptable, in my opinion, and I'm talking for the other 90 people. It's warm in this house. It's abominable. Thank you.
Cora Swornson, Rachel Brown, and Michelle Portillo.
Hi, my name is Cora Swornson, and I'm a resident here at West Jordan. This is Rachel Brown, and this is Michelle Portillo, and we are students at the Jordan Academy for Technology and Careers studying veterinary science. We'd like to present to you a rising issue in the veterinary medical field, and that is the practice of decline. Sorry. Decline cats is a procedure that removes the cat's nails, and it's intended to, sorry, it's to reduce the amount of damage a cat could cause in your house. But what you don't actually know is that they remove not only the nail, but the bone with it, too. So if I were to go through the decline procedure, I would remove up to my first joint. I would have all of my 10 fingers, 10 fingertips cut off. There are three different ways to declaw a cat. The first one is laser, which is expensive, but it's the least common. The second is the scalpel method, which is taking a blade and slicing off the bone. The last procedure is the guillotine method, which is like taking a cigar cutter and cutting off the toes. All of these come with painful results. All of these leave you with nerves, with loose nerves in the cat's toes that some veterinarians just leave hanging there, which could cause extreme pain for the cat and also blood infections. 15% of cats, after they've been declawed, developed a new habit, such as urinating and soiling the house because it hurts to use a litter box. 18% of cats start biting, or biting more forcefully because that's their only defense. Estimated amount of cats declawed in the United States is 22 million. The decline of cats is banned in over 20 countries and eight U.S. cities because it's recognized as an illegal act of animal cruelty. American Veterinary Medical Association refers to decline of domestic cats as a therapeutic resort, which means that they only declaw if it is the last option. And that's because there's so many other options, such as purchasing nail shells which cover your cat's claws, purchasing scratch posts, or a spray that repels your cat from scratching your furniture, and all of these can be bought at your local pet stores. We've started a petition, and we have over 1,000 supporters. We've hung up posters in our local schools and work environments. We are visiting city to city to pass this ban until all cities have been banned, until all cities ban this inhumane procedure. Only three clinics in Utah don't declaw this. We need to eliminate this cruel practice. Your support would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Yes, Mayor Rolf, council members, city leaders, and fellow residents of West Jordan. I wanted to introduce myself officially. I know that I was briefly introduced at my first city council meeting, but I wanted to take a minute and officially introduce myself. I am the new representative for District 43, which was Adam Gardner's district. Everyone loved Adam. He went on to become the county recorder. And I am a married mother of four, mostly grown children. I do have one senior in high school, and I have lived in West Jordan for 21 years. Since winning the special election on September 14th, I have learned a lot and done a lot. I met with the governor for my appointment. I was sworn in by the Speaker of the House. It was very thrilling. I went into special session and passed those four bills. It was beyond exciting. I met with the Jordan School District Legislative Board and West Jordan City Representatives to find out what the needs are for the city and attended, I've been attending some city council meetings and Jordan School Board meetings. And on the Hill, I've been placed on the Business and Economic Development Committee, the Law Enforcement Committee, and the Criminal Justice Appropriations Committee. So far, had some constituents addressed me with concerns about abortion and UDOT issues. And I did propose my first bill this week, so it's to eliminate some red tape in county offices. And just yesterday, I met with the Utah Disabilities Council people, and that was very enlightening, too. It's just been a whirlwind. I'm having a great time. I've loved every moment of it. But I want everyone to know, in the whole city, anytime anyone has anything that they would like addressed up on the Hill, I would love to hear from you. Please do not hesitate to ask, email, phone, whatever. I am available to talk or to respond to those concerns. And I want it to be my job to represent the people of District 43 certainly, but of, my district is entirely in West Jordan, so most of the representatives have a variety of cities they represent, so that makes it really nice for me. And I hope to be a very responsive representative, so I just wanted to introduce myself officially. Thank you.
Thank you. Erin Berry, would you like to speak during the public hearing time or now? You'll have a time, we do have a public hearing on 7B. Would you like to wait?
Yes.
Okay. That's all that have signed up to speak. Anyone wishing to speak during citizen's comments now would be the opportunity. I will close the citizens' comments. Did I miss something?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you briefly again. I'm Beth Holbrook with Waste Management, and I just wanted to say thank you very much for the opportunity to be up here again and for some of the circumstances that bring us all here. I really appreciate this, and just wanted to say that Waste Management is very happy to be in West Jordan City. We feel that this is a great community with a lot of future growth and development, and we are excited to be part of it. We've been in West Jordan since 1993, and we are thrilled to look at this community and move forward. We are, as you know, we have a proposal tonight as a later discussion point, and we hope that there's an opportunity for us to actually serve the community and to be an even greater community partner with you guys. Thank you, I really do appreciate it, and if you have any questions, please let me know. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Judy Ward, you signed up to speak on 7B. Would you like to speak?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' comments? I will now close citizens' comments and move to the consent items. Councilmember Newton?
Mayor, I would move that we approve consent items A through...
Councilmember Burton?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Newton, a second by Councilmember Burton. Discussion to the motion. Let's vote.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Rolf?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Vote passes six in favor.
Item 7A, receive public input regarding the ballot proposition with respect to the issuance of general obligation bonds in the amount not to exceed $46 million for the construction of a recreation center. I will now open the public hearing for item 7A. If you're here to speak on this item, now is the opportunity. Please. It's a reminder, state your name and address, and you have three minutes to speak.
Alexandra Efremo, 3735 Jud Circle, West Jordan. I am really, really, really excited about West Jordan having the go-forth to create, to go ahead with this recreation center. I saw some of the blueprints by the original presentation. It's awesome. I think it will, the idea that we have it here will be an incredible incentive to for a lot of companies to come to West Jordan, and so sure, I'm a million percent in favor of this ballot proposition. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on item 7A? I will close the public hearing for item 7A and move to item 7B. Receive public input regarding ordinance 17-60 regarding a preliminary development plan establishing a density of 8.5 units per acre for Ganson Lane located at 8661 South Redwood in the PRDH zoning district. Alpine Homes LLC, Stephen Jackson Allen, applicant. Scott?
Thanks, Mayor. Just as a general background to the council and to the residents here, this property was rezoned back in January 2017, so earlier this year. This is the next step in the process to come before the council with this development plan, to talk a little bit more about the specifics associated with this development. I'll turn the time over to Larry Gardner for more details.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So the planning commission granted preliminary subdivision approval and recommends the city council to approve the preliminary development plan for Ganson Lane. This project will not only create new housing, but it will complete the end of Gardner Lane, which is a, I'd like to point out that is a master plan road, been on the city's transportation master plan for several years, and so with this development, that road will be constructed if approved. And Mayor, with your permission, I'd like to turn the time over to Steve Jackson from Alpine Homes, and he can run you through his project, if that's okay?
That would be appropriate.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, appreciate your attention tonight and having us here. Obviously, this has been quite the process going through this, but ultimately, we trying to provide a really great community for, obviously, the city as a whole, and help with, you know, alleviating traffic in the area by creating some more circuitry and, you know, punching this road through. First of all, just kind of give you an overview. Obviously, this is located about 8660 South and Redwood Road. This is the property in question here. As you can see, this is Gardner Lane as it comes through, and we'll look more into that later. So overall, the goals and objectives, by talking with the city council members and the mayor and even members on the city planning commission, the ultimate idea was they were looking for a community that wasn't going to provide a lot of multifamily housing, a lot of stuff that will turn into rentals. They wanted something that was going to keep residents in this area for a little bit more long-term. So that kind of fell right into what we do as a company. We provide really nice houses that sell at a very good price point for people to own and maintain and are traditionally owner-occupied. So that was our first goal. Obviously, attract more commercial is the main priority of the city council, and our thought there was, you know, we've reached out to a couple of different commercial developers and asked them, you know, what this area needs. Typically, in most market studies, they'll tell you that commercial follows rooftops. So where a lot of the residents are now out towards the west side of the city, you're running into, you know, issues where Long Redwood Road, it looks a little bit older, a little bit more abandoned, there's large spots of land that are old farms that are maybe one house on six acres, one house on two or three acres, and our thought there is, you know, this is going to be a more city-center area in West Jordan, so we wanted to provide something to infill on that as well. And along that, you know, obviously, it'll improve the beauty of the community, improve the Redwood Road corridor, make it more attractive, and like we said earlier with that Collector Road going through, it'll be improving the conditions of traffic running east to west. So just to kind of give you a brief breakdown of our buyer profiles, like we were saying, to attract more permanent residents, we sell similar homes in Midvale and in Bluffdale, and the price points on those right now are in the mid to upper 300s. We might have some here that start a little bit lower than that, but we're looking about 330 to 370 in terms of a house point, or price point. A lot of people that are moving into those are young professionals, empty nesters that are looking to move down and maybe have a smaller piece of property maintained so they can travel or retire, go on missions, what have you. And then younger families as well that are sort of moving up from a town home or moving up from an apartment, they're looking to buy their first or their second home. This kind of fits right into, into that demographic. So some of our community features that we're proposing, we are proposing to have a gated community. Once again, the thought there was to allow for a nice community that'll have residents want to stay there for a longer-term period of time. Obviously, a gated community will keep the place nice, obviously, right by Redwood Road. You know, there's going to be a lot of traffic that goes by there, so if you gate the community off, you'll have people that want to stay there for a longer period. A jogging trail, obviously, for fitness, you know, for, so people can get up and exercise in the morning while staying in their community. A sports court for the same purposes, a tot lot will provide some open space and green area, and a picnic location as well. So just to kind of revisit that Gardner Lane Collector Road, this is on the master plan. The costs associated with that are rather significant, but we can make it work based on, you know, what we're looking at for our project. So obviously, we're really looking forward to working with the city and getting that project opened up. We've obviously worked with UDOT, we've done a traffic study on what all that will entail, and so we have the developments from that. With that, we're doing, we're proposing, well, with the city's comments, we're doing two main roads, or two main traveling lanes, a left-hand turn lane, and then obviously collector lanes that come off of that, and I can show you a little bit more on that on our final plaque. We'll also be having bike paths that come through there that'll kind of collect onto that road and provide for pedestrian and bike traffic as well. So this is just kind of a little overlook of what this will look like once this is done through. Our community will be everything to the south of this, and this will punch through and connect to Redwood Road. I know we've talked to Bill Baronowski in the Traffic and Engineering Department about potential for doing a stoplight on Redwood Road. That will obviously ultimately be determined after a traffic study's done by the city and with UDOT as well. Let's see here. So basically, just kind of jumping, I know I'm running short on time, but jumping to the densities of the area, obviously, you have your twin homes down here that are in the south. Those actually have a pretty high density of about 9.2 units per acre. Over here is another planned community of Dove Meadows, that's 52 units. They're about 7.1 units per acre, and in our proposed development here, 48 units, which is 8.48 units per acre. So overall, it keeps within the same area of the community. We're not the most dense, but we're not the least dense either, so it kind of gives you flexibility of that neighborhood and a little bit of variety of housing. So our architecture and design, these are some of the homes that we're proposing. These are ones we build right now in our Bluffdale subdivision and ones that we built in our, our Midvale subdivision back behind Winco and East River Walk. This is our larger, or sorry, our smaller plan that comes in at 2154 square feet, and it'll all have an unfinished basement with them as well. These are just some interior shots to show you kind of the quality of the interiors that we do. We like to have nice, updated, modern looks to them, and that really attracts the buyer. One thing we have going for us with these smaller home plans is we do have a bigger kitchen, which is a better selling point. A lot of other builders have smaller, more enclosed kitchens. Just kind of some examples of the elevations that we have. So we're proposing three floor plans, and each floor plan will have four different elevations, and that will provide variety to the community overall. So you'll see here, we've got a traditional style, prairie style, and a craftsman style, and then we're also introducing a farm-style elevation that's been really popular down in Bluffdale. So this is just a kind of breakdown of these real quick. We can run through them. Traditional, prairie style, obviously, craftsman, farm-style, which has been very popular recently. Here's kind of your breakdown of your floor plan. That might be kind of hard to see, but we did include that in the development plan. As you can see, the Aspen here is, it's actually four bedrooms with an option, or sorry, three bedrooms with an optional fourth bedroom, depending on what people decide on their options. This is our larger plan, which is almost 2,400 square feet with a unfinished basement. That'll be similar to what we were proposing with the other one, but just a little bit bigger, goes a little bit deeper. This is our model home that's located in Bluffdale, which is this model. Once again, some interior shots to kind of show you what we're proposing here. Once again, same, same thought process here, we'll have multiple elevations, so we can add variety into the neighborhood. Traditional, prairie style, craftsman style, farm style, and then there's your floor plan. Finally, we do, we are proposing some smaller units to add some variety in here. These ones are about 2,000 square feet with an unfinished basement. These ones, we're building up in our Portland community, and have been really popular there for some, some entry level to a little bit above that type housing prices. And basically, the thought is on this one, we wanted to add variety. We didn't want to just have two house plans. We wanted a third house plan to get in there, get some more people that are young, some younger families that are looking for some affordable housing types. So there's kind of a rendering of that, and then, like I said, that overall is, it's sort of in the development works at this point, but we're working on redrafting it and redrawing it so they can fit the criteria of the code. Here's just a few samples of our color schemes. We like to do pretty traditional earth tones. Here's just a few samples of our color schemes. We like to do pretty traditional earth tones. A lot of grays, whites, and tans are in right now. Every so often, people will ask for this kind of Tiffany blue color door. A lot of people like that, so we do provide that as an option. Let's see here. So this is kind of a brief breakdown of what our updated site plan looks like. As you can see, you have your 48 units here. Each house will have its own individual lot. We will be fencing the back, or allowing for fencing the back, but up to the back corner of the house, so that the frontages and the front yards and side yards are more open. Those will be maintained by an HOA. However, we are proposing little vinyl inserts that will kind of come out from the front of the house that'll provide a screening for trash cans. That way, you don't have a lot of trash cans that are just kind of sitting out and kind of become an eyesore as you drive through the neighborhood. We've done that in other communities, and we feel like it's worked pretty well there. As you can see, our proposed open space with a detention pond, our tot lot. We're actually going to be finalizing our location of our sports court, but that will be put on our final plaque. So once we get the exact locations of every amenity, we will be listing those amenities on the final plaque. Kind of a brief breakdown of what our individual lots, landscaping plans look like, obviously, structures, some bark. Each house will have a tree in the front yard. We'll try to provide as much greenery as possible in there. And obviously, we'll have our detention basin will be landscaped. It should be pretty shallow. We're looking at, for every three feet of distance, will be a one-foot drop, I believe is what the calculation was. I might have that backwards, but overall, it's gonna be a pretty shallow detention pond that could be used as an open playing field as well. So here's just a couple of examples of what we're proposing for. Our gazebo and picnic area, and some different options we're looking at for our tot lot and playground equipment. Kind of an example of an asphalt running trail that'll be coming through the community, and obviously, a sports court that we'll be providing as well. We'll put some barbecue stuff in there, obviously, some dogway stations for people who want to take their jog, dog through, or walk through the community on the jogging trail as well. And then ultimately, along Redwood Road, what we're proposing is a precast masonry wall that'll have different design elements to it. We'll be setting that back about five feet from the sidewalk, so it'll allow for landscaping along Redwood Road with shrubs and bark dust. That way, there'll be a little bit of a screening along Redwood Road as well, add some landscaping there, and provide some beauty along Redwood Road. So I think overall, that's just kind of the breakdown of it, just kind of give you, hopefully answer some of the questions that you might have had. I can answer any questions now if you guys have them, and then we can open it back up to over here, so.
House member Burton.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions. The first one is, since this is a gated community, I'm assuming there'll be private streets, and the streets will be maintained by the HOA?
That's correct, yes. All the streets will be maintained by the HOA. Snow removal will be in HOA.
Okay. And then the signal light, since that's not happening now, I guess that means that you are not paying for it, so when it does happen, it will be under the city expense.
And that's something we need to solidify, I believe, with, with Bill Baranowski, but I do believe that would be a city expense, and from what I've been told, they've worked out something to where they were expecting that at some point when the road goes in. Because, I mean, the road itself is, you know, several hundred thousand dollars just to put the road in, so we'll cover that cost. The city will cover the, the light, and then ultimately, you'll have your Collector Road there, so.
So there's bicycling you were talking about. That goes all the way from Redwood Road to the existing road, so it's how many feet long?
That, I'm not sure. They will go through the portion that we're putting in. I do believe that ultimately, there will be an extension of the bicycle lane. I don't know if you can really zoom in here, but you can see, they'll come along here on this side, and then on this side as well. Then obviously, you have your, you know, right-hand lane here, your left-hand turn lane, your through lane, and then a right-hand turn lane onto Redwood Road from there. So that'll mitigate the traffic backing up from here, so you have different places for whatever direction people want to go.
And there is no bike lane on Redwood Road?
Not on Redwood Road. No, sorry. That'll be on Gardner Lane.
Right. So it'll go up and end at Redwood Road?
Yes, and I think the thought was, the city would eventually have the bike path go across Redwood Road as well, onto Gardner Lane, follow down, and then extend it down that way. Yeah. Sorry for the confusion on that.
No, that, that's good. So you were saying that you were gonna have 8.48 units per acre?
Correct, yeah.
And your adjoining neighbors are 9.2 units per acre, and 9.1?
Yes.
You're right in the middle of that. Okay. So you have three different floor plans plus the new one, or three including the new one?
Three including the new one. So we have three floor plans, four elevations apiece, so you are...
Twelve styles?
Twelve styles, yeah, ultimately. And then they have different colors. We put in our development plan that we're not going to allow multiple elevations and floor plans next to each other. There needs to be some sort of variation. There needs to be a separation of roof pitches, color schemes, floor plans, et cetera. So you wouldn't have same floor plan, same elevation, one after the other after the other.
Okay. And will you share with us your plan on providing an exit for Dove Meadows, an emergency exit?
Yeah, we can go over that. So initially, when we first took this up with the city council and planning commission last fall and into January, we had a road that was stubbing in right here, and that was gonna be the exit point. Meeting with Dove Meadows, HOA, you know, obviously, they had some issues with that because this was going to take away some of the parking that they have through here. So we tried to work with them, tried to come up with a conclusion, and ultimately, you know, the fear of loss is one of the greater than the want for gain kind of thing. So they didn't want to lose any parking spaces, and we can respect that, and we understand. So ultimately, what we decided is to try to pull as many lots and fixtures away from this area as possible, and then we can kind of negotiate, you know, what we need to do from there. There is a protection strip right here that's actually owned by the developer who developed this piece, so it's not actually owned by the HOA. So from there, the HOA said, hey, if you want to connect to that, that's fine. We don't care as long as we don't lose our parking. So our thought is that we would allow for a connection here, put a crash gate in, and have some type of asphalt path that would come down here that would be traffic rated to adhere to the fire trucks that would be able to come through there. So we've already made plans for an emergency access over here on Redwood Road. Obviously, if this one were to go through, and we could work this one out, we would put this one here, and then you wouldn't need that gap in the, in the masonry wall. That's still in the negotiation process, but we have a plan in place either way for an emergency exit.
So that emergency exit could go either direction, into Dove Meadows or out of?
This one, yes. It would just be a crash gate. It'd only be used for emergency purposes. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be used for, for day-to-day traffic or anything like that. In fact, most likely, what we'd have is a curb that would come through here, and then maybe a slight modified curb that would allow for a ramp up onto the asphalt path there. It'd be a 20-foot wide asphalt path, and it'd obviously have to be traffic rated to handle the fire truck's weight. And then from there, we'd have obviously no parking signs. We wouldn't want people to park in there and block a traffic signal, or traffic, sorry, emergency exit, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
House member Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. The, the fire access was one of the points I had a question about as well. Thank you for addressing that. Where is on this map the jogging trail?
So the jogging trail is incorporated with the sidewalk. We have it right here that comes through, and then kind of loops around, so you have several different options. So you'll come through here, and it actually loops into the sidewalk here, and so you can have a loop there. I believe we clocked this a little under a quarter of a mile, and so we're even debating the idea of putting in little tiny markers along it so people know how far they're jogging. In addition to that, you have a trail that can come along this way and come around here, so you have some, some curb, gutter, and sidewalk that'll allow you to draw, you know, jog down a longer distance and go a little bit further distance. And obviously, we have in between the, the masonry wall and these lots, we have the trail coming up through here as well, and then connecting back over to the sidewalk. So the thought here too is, this is essentially just, you know, kind of dead green space, but if we put a trail through here, that'll, you know, allow for a little bit of traffic on the side of these houses, and obviously, you know, it'll be less that we have to worry about trash collecting in and other things like that. So overall, the circulation is, you'll see, there's a sidewalk that kind of comes through here, down, around, and then kind of it can loop back up. You have your little crosswalks here. You have another sidewalk comes on this side, loops around this way, and then also down around here and connects back up. So you have several different circuitries that can go through there, so you can have different jogging paths, if you will.
Okay. Thank you for that. The other question I had was, it looked like with the planning commission minutes, there's quite a bit of discussion as far as the zoning and the garage door?
Correct, yeah.
Width. I was just wondering if you could address that really quickly?
Yeah.
As a percentage of the, of the frontage of the house, and also just how, how this subdivision compares to the Dove Meadows as far as setbacks and lot size, I think.
Okay. Yeah, so the, just to answer your first question on the, the houses, so we took a look at those, and we went back and obviously, we wanted to measure them just to make sure. These ones, we, the, the Arrowhead and the Aspen, we're right at 50. We've got a 15-foot garage door, and we've got a 30-foot wide house. So our garage frontages on those are fine. The one question is gonna be this plan right here, where obviously, since it's such a skinny plan, that's not going to be a possibility. We are looking at some options right now to reconfigure this, obviously, to make sure that we can meet that code, and then ultimately, the code does allow for some variation, to do some garage door treatments such as windows, or some sort of decor on the garage door, if you're not able to meet that requirement for whatever reason. So the, the combination of garage door treatments, and then obviously, trying to re-engineer the plan so it meets that requirement is what we're looking at. And like I said, these are still at our drafter right now before we go through a final plan on that. We would, we would obviously submit those to the city for approval, so.
Okay. The other question was on setbacks?
Setbacks, yes.
And, and lot sizes compared to the, the neighbors?
So compared to the neighbors, they have a 10-foot wide, or 10-foot deep setback on all these lots here. Their front setback is about 15 feet, depending on which, which location you're looking at. Most of these are actually pretty shallow, and they're just wide. So a lot of these houses are one-story with a basement, and they take up the majority of the lot. These ones here, I believe the, the setback actually is only eight feet along here. It's kind of somewhere between 10 to eight feet. We're proposing a 10-foot setback because that's pretty standard in a lot of these dense communities, but given our house plan and where it would be located, we're actually looking closer to somewhere between 15 to 20 feet in our rear setback. And if it helps you guys at all, we can actually come together with a, with a plan that'll show each individual house footprint dropped into these lots, so it'll kind of show you what that background is. In fact, I think we had one in our proposed sort of landscaping plan we had. Let me see if I can pull it up here. Here you go. So you can see here, obviously, there's still a pretty big distance back to your backyard, and these are all pretty, pretty accurate. And then if you look here at our landscaping plan, this one, I believe, is our deepest lot, or our deepest house plan. It's 52 feet deep, and you've got about 15 feet from the back of the fence to the very back portion of the house. These ones are closer to 25 to 30 feet, depending on what point in the house you're measuring from.
Okay. One other question that just occurred to me as we were talking about setbacks, 10 to 15 feet may or may not be wide enough to park a car on the driveway. As we know, we...
Right.
We Americans like to use our garages for stuff that's not our cars.
Right, right.
So is there parking, if you go back to the overall site plan?
Yeah.
Is there parking, other than driveways, for guests?
So...
And or, and or where I'm gonna put my truck?
I'll walk you through that. We met with the city, their, the engineering department's original proposal was to do a five-foot park strip and a five-foot sidewalk. What we ran into there was, you know, obviously, with the placement of the driveway, you're gonna have a truck that's gonna be overlapping into the sidewalk, almost guaranteed. So we tried to go back and look at it, and you know, let's look at this as if everybody in this community owned a Ford F-350. So we looked at the Ford F-350, it's about 23 feet long. So obviously, that's not going to be, because not everybody's gonna own a Ford F-350. But what we are looking at here for our house plans are, this is gonna be 20 feet from the back of the, the back of the sidewalk, and then there'll be about an extra six feet now. So now, instead of the five-foot sidewalk and five-foot park strip, we have a six-foot sidewalk right up against the street, and then you're gonna have six feet here, and then you're gonna be about 20 feet back to the house. And our thought about that is that we want to allow for larger cars to park there. We want extra parking in the, in the driveway. And ultimately, from what we've seen from these communities, a lot of people don't use their garage to park their car. They use it for just about everything else. So we wanted to make sure we had enough parking here on the, on the driveways. Now, to answer your other plan on designated parking, we don't currently have any designated parking, and I'll tell you why. So the city minimum for a asphalt width is 25 feet. We're actually developed, we developed a project in Mapleton right now. We're building it, and that's how thick the asphalt is right now. It's 25 feet wide, and it's not great to get down there with all of our framers and, you know, electricians and everybody, and all of our subcontractors parked along the road. So we wanted to widen that a little bit. So what we've come up with here is, it's actually gonna be a 28-foot wide asphalt driveway, or drive path, and then you're gonna have an extra, give or take foot, foot and a half on either side of the road for your gutter. So your entire drive width is gonna be close to 31 feet. So with that, with a 31-foot drive width, if you pull your car over on either side of the road, it'll be enough for a passage through. If you park a car on each side, one car can get through from there. So that's the other option that we're looking at there.
Will you be able to park a car on the street with how many driveways that are gonna be right next to each other?
Yes, there will be. So we're actually...
Especially with those 18-foot wide houses?
Yeah, so we're actually, those are 23-foot wide, but...
Oh, okay.
But yeah, so we're actually proposing, and it's kind of hard to see on here because this isn't exactly to scale on the driveways, but what we're actually proposing is we'll have the, the driveways actually flipped, so the driveways are next to each other. So you actually have a 30-foot path in between every other house, so it'll give you enough distance to park cars along here. Obviously, you can have cars park along here, along here as well, and then along this side here. So that's kind of what we're looking at for the community parking. In terms of, you know, these are two-car garages, meaning you'll have two spaces on the driveway as well, so you'll have enough space for the residents and then people who are visiting as well will be able to park along the road, so.
One F-350 per every two houses, essentially.
Yeah, one F-350 per every two houses, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll now open the public hearing for item 7B. We will move to Aaron Woodbury first.
Good evening. I try not to take a lot of time. I'm a resident along 8660, and right now, we currently have a traffic issue already. The road has become popular for racing. There's an issue with bullet bikes going up and down the road at a high speed. Not that long ago, my neighbor who is back there with me, there was an accident because two teens were drag racing down the street, and going so fast that they punctured their tires going over a curb and basically totaled the car in our driveway. So we, we decided to do a traffic study, and the traffic study, we came back just a little short. The city traffic manager or engineer basically said that we needed at least 800 cars that goes through that particular street on an average weekday, and the number that came back was 761. So we were very, very close to reaching those parameters. With this proposed development, traffic's going to increase on that road. That's just a matter of fact. There are several families up and down that street, including mine, several small families. If this goes through, my neighbor and I are requesting that a couple of speed bumps be put in for safety reasons. Already, the mailboxes are designed in such a way that my neighbor has to cross the street in order to go get her mail. She said she basically, she takes her life in her own hands every time she has to go ahead and cross the street. It's a problem right now. The area, again, the problem's just going to intensify with this development. So anyway, that is something I'd like to propose. I'd like to get it out there. Again, we've tried to go through the channels and, and, you know, we, we already went through that process before, but again, with this new development, things are going to worsen. And I am concerned of another accident. She's had, she's lived in the neighborhood longer than I have, and is, this is not the first accident that has happened in front of her house. So in order to prevent anything in the future, I would like to see if maybe we could get something established or set up. That would be really helpful. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, my name is Judy Ward, and I have the similar concerns as that he has had. So we would like to also propose that the speed limit does not change. It currently is 25 miles per hour. I don't think anyone drives that. The road is wider than most residential roads, and so I don't know if that is a reason why people drive faster on that road, but it has been a little frightening to live there. And it was about a year and a half ago, when these kids were racing, and one lost control, came into my driveway and hit my parked car, and the insurance company deemed it totaled, that's how fast they were going. Very scary. Several neighbors thought their homes were hit. We were very concerned about the speed. We were very concerned about the speed. If I didn't live on that street, I would use it as a cut-through if it were up in a regular road, I admit that. And I think everybody in the surrounding area will do the same thing. I think they're going to avoid 90th South and 7800 South and they're going to use my street as a main thoroughfare and that is a large concern. I have lived there for 21 years, a loyal resident of West Jordan City. I work in West Jordan City. I would hate to have to leave because I feel that I'm not safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in public hearing, please?
Alexandra Eframo, 3735, Jones Circle, West Jordan. The detention thing, I'm against any green grass on this entire development. We should use only rock and perennial bushes. And there we see grass in that entire thing. I'm 90% about any grass in the entire thing. I haven't heard how many acres are on this particular entire development, or maybe I missed it. I just haven't heard anybody say how many acres are on there. To me, this looks very claustrophobic. And the thing is, that one road there going north and south, it looks like it's a dead end at the north and at the south. What are we going to do about a fire truck that's in there? I don't think you should have any, it should be totally revamped. You should, you should not have a dead end anywhere on this development up there. That's what it looks like to me, that it's a dead end on, to the right there, that one street. I don't know, maybe somebody can tell me that it's not a dead end. It looks like a dead end on top and on the right. And I'm fearful about the fire trucks, but as I say, I, I don't know, to me it just looks too tight and I think that it should be reduced as far as the units per acre. But somebody, please tell me how many acres are on this. I don't know. And it bothers me when they're trying to say that people that are going to come and visit, what if you're going to have a party and you're going to invite 30 people? I mean, where are they going to park their cars? There just isn't any place for parking cars. You're not going to park in another person's driveway and to me it just looks dangerous. It's just too dangerous. There just isn't any parking for guests. And I don't know. I, I don't like it. I don't like it. I, I think it's just too claustrophobic and particularly those two dead ends there. If you had a fire up there, a fire truck, I mean, he, he has to, he can't go through, he has to back down and then go to the left there. But not in favor of it. Thank you.
Just to answer your two questions, Councilmember Jacob looked it up and it's 5.7 acres total and that's called a hammerhead and that's, we'll have to pass our fire as part of the development that they can.
You say it will have to pass.
They'll have to approve.
They haven't approved it yet, have they?
I don't know how far along we are, but they'll, it'll have to be approved by them.
Yeah, what do you call it, a hammerhead?
A hammerhead, yes.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens, excuse me, during public hearing on item 7B? I will close the public hearing for item 7B and return to the council. Councilmember Burton?
Well, apparently there's not any discussion, so I'll go ahead and make a motion. So based on the findings and evidence and staff report, I moved to approve, what number is that?
17-60.
17-60, thank you. And also I want to, well, no, I'll leave it at that.
I'll second that.
A motion by Councilmember Burton and a second by Councilmember Newton. Discussion to the motion. Let's vote. No.
Councilmember Newton?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
No.
Vote passes 42 in favor.
Public hearing item 7C received public input and considered for approval, resolution 17-211 declaring the city-owned real property located at 1970 West, 7800 South as surplus property and authorize the disposition. David?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. At this point, the old library has been sitting vacant while being used by the arts community. We have obviously an interest in seeing our properties being utilized to the best of our ability. I would recommend putting this particular piece of property up for sale. Once we sell it, we'd use that money to help fund the art center across the street.
Any questions from council? Councilmember Burton?
So if we were to surplus this property prior to the new building being built, what are we going to do with the supplies and the arts people in the meantime?
There's a great many costumes that are currently being used by the band. The band instruments, we'd want to put somewhere where it can be locked up and safely protected. There are some places in City Hall, but that is a challenge to find yet a place for once they are locked up, they could practice. The community room is probably the one place in this City Hall that they could still utilize, but all of the remaining costumes remains a real challenge as to what we're going to do with them. My recommendation may be coming forth with if we sell the building soon. I would probably ask for those items to be surplus as well.
So my second question is, wouldn't it be, why isn't it a lot wiser to wait until we have that and just do it then, just wait another year or something like that?
There are some other items with the building that are currently challenging and I believe remain a liability due to the city and one of the reasons I'd like to at this point put it on the market.
I'll open the public hearing for item 7C. If you're here to speak on this item, now is the opportunity. Seeing no one, I will close public hearing item 7C and return to the council. Councilmember Newton?
Mayor, I move that we approve resolution 17-211 declaring that property as surplus property.
I'm sorry, Mayor, there was an indication from Councilman Chad Nichols held his hand up. I don't know if he wanted to make a comment before that motion's completed.
How about a second?
Oh. There we go.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Newton and a second by Councilmember Nichols. Discussion to the motion. Councilmember Nichols, did you have discussion?
I just was going to just say I'm glad we're back here. This is where we were a while ago. I'm just excited for going down this road. I think it's a great way to finance the cultural arts facility, just a good time for us. Thank you.
Let's vote.
Councilmember Jacob?
Enthusiastically, yes.
Three check marks? Just kidding.
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Ruff?
Yes.
The vote passes six in favor.
Business item 8A, discussion and possible action regarding resolution 17-212 authorizing staff to restrict the flow of traffic on 70th South from 27th West to 3200 West for option one, one through 14 days, or option two, 28 days.
Ray?
Yes, I'd like to begin by giving a little update on the construction project. The contractor has finished sewer, storm and water work in 2A from 13th up to about the concrete. Before you enter Edwood Road, he has also paved the project in asphalt from 13th up to right before the concrete apron, before the Smith entrance. He still has some water work and secondary water work to do inside the concrete before he can place the concrete. In Phase 2B, they've completed sewer, storm and water work from about 1985 West to about 2700 West. They have two sewer laterals still shy of 2700 West on the south side that are still pending that they need to construct. They've finished water, sewer and storm drain work from 27th West up to about the Utah and Salt Lake Canal. They are ready to put in sewer laterals on the south side from about 27th West up to about the Utah and Salt Lake Canal. Before they put in those sewer laterals, you'll see them place asphalt on the north side of the road from about 27th to about the Utah and Salt Lake Canal so that traffic can be rerouted. Right now, traffic from 27th to the Utah and Salt Lake Canal is on the south side of the road and they would like to switch that so they can do that sewer lateral work. There is a, as part of this proposal, I'll explain that this area, 27th to 32, is different than the other areas of our project. There is a Rocky Mountain Power buried power line that goes in the middle of the road from about 2700 West to the substation to the west. That power line required us to offset the sewer line to the north of its normal center line location so that we could accommodate both the underground buried power line and this sewer line. That has shortened the area to the north where traffic can be placed because when they place the laterals, they will have to go from the existing sewer line to the south, back to each home. That is why this request is being made, is so that they can complete that work safely. The two proposals that they are making, the first one is to close the eastbound travel lane from 27th to approximately the canal so that they can have the room to be able to install those laterals and a safe room to work and also a safe place for the cars to be. Because the sewer, the sewer line is north of that center line location, they only have enough asphalt for cars, but it'll be put down for the one lane of traffic. If, if it is closed in that area and cars westbound are able to just use that single lane, then they propose to complete the work in 14 days. If council chooses to not restrict and close that eastbound lane, but if they wanted to keep both lanes open, then the contractor would use flaggers during the day. At night, he would allow, he would move his equipment from the work zone and put plates over areas and he would allow two lanes of traffic so that they could safely maneuver at night for that work. That work would take 28 days instead of 14. The reason why it would take longer is because when they did the, the closure of the westbound lane allows them to rehabilitate the road and to remove and replace the road while they're doing the sewer work. If they have to open the lanes at night so that they can have one lane in each direction at night, then it, they cannot do the reconstruction of the road work at the same time as the sewer lateral work. Do you have any questions?
I have several and it looks like the other council members have questions as well. Going back to schedule 2A.
Okay.
Do you believe the contractor is 50% complete with 2A currently, knowing that it was supposed to be finished on October 15th by the original deadline?
I don't remember the last pay schedule that I got, but I believe that he was over 50% complete.
Oh, really?
Right.
With definitely the hardest part to go.
Again, being over 50% is not being 100% complete, so he still has a lot of work left.
Okay. Do you know, did they pour higher, this was a discussion two weeks ago, did they pour higher concrete on the concrete that they slipped yesterday that they're putting road base up against today?
I know that there were some questions about the curb at 27th I asked in my last meeting and they said that at three days they had a strength of 3,600 PSI. So I think that's 70% of the 4,000 PSI that you're asking about. So their response back to me is that they are getting the breaks that are, that are required, that a high early wood provide. Specifically, do I know if they're doing a high early mix? I'd have to check. I know they are doing a winter mix, so they're including an extra bag mix into that concrete because of the conditions of being after October 1st.
But, but I saw them placing, they slipped the concrete yesterday and I saw them placing a road base up against the curb today, 24 hours, less than 24 hours later.
I'll, I'll have to check. I don't, I don't know if that used high early strengths in that.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. So how will this road closure on 70th affect 27th?
Thank you for bringing that up. 27th, with either proposal, 27th needs to be closed from just south of, or just east of that intersection to the west so that we can do the final two sewer laterals and complete the, thank you. So there are two homes here that have not had their sewer laterals hooked up to the sewer yet and we have not actually placed asphalt, new asphalt in this section. So for approximately seven days, this needs, this area needs to close so that we can connect the sewer in 27th that is south of the intersection up to the new sewer and place those two new sewer laterals. Also at that time, they'll be removing and replacing the roadway here. If you remember, they have removed and replaced the north part of this roadway and they need to replace the south so that we can completely finish with 27th and turn it back to the citizens and not have to work in it again. So with either closure, with either option one or two, they will need to close 27th for approximately seven days. They would like to begin that work starting Tuesday, I believe, next Tuesday.
So that closure will just be on the south side?
It would be on the south side.
And that side, they'll just turn?
That is correct.
And either way, it'll be a week. Now if we choose neither option, what happens?
Then that work cannot be completed. You would essentially be saying that you don't want them to do that work because it's not possible for them to safely enter that intersection, excavate 12 feet down for the manhole and connect it in and keep traffic open and not susceptible to concern with either their equipment or with the hole.
Is there a possibility that they do this work and due to the time eating of the year, it has to be redone again in the spring?
The city regularly paves the, this type of work up, at least until November 1st. That is our, our window from when we're cautious. That is our window from when we're cautious about paving dates. November 1st would fall somewhere in between there, so there is a possibility, if they did it during a day that didn't meet temperatures, that we would have to redo this again. But we could talk with our inspectors and make sure that that we do our best. I don't know the weather, but I don't believe that we have weather accommodating for the next week. I don't know past, much past the next week.
So the existing work that they have already done?
Yeah.
Is that satisfactory?
So far, from the tests that I have seen, the work that they have done has met specifications for the utility work and the roadway. I have not done a profilograph on the road, so as far as the smoothness of the road, we usually do that at the end, and then there may be fixes that have to be done. I'll have to wait to see what the profilograph says for the quality of the ride of the asphalt.
So up to this point, the inspections you've done on the paving has been adequate?
They have passed their density tests and their, the other tests that we have performed. If they don't pass the test, we ask them to redo the work.
Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. So 70th South just seems to be a topic a lot this year, and it seems like we're making it as inconvenient as possible for the residents. My question is, Option 1 is October 30th to November 14th. So when you say they want to close 27th a week from today, that would be November 1st, or no, Tuesday?
No, I think it would be October, yeah, Halloween.
So on Halloween, we would close 70th to one lane, depending on the option, and 27th going north and south would be closed?
Right. That is correct. If you want to have them do the work in 14 days versus 28 days, then, I mean, those are our two options.
But either one, 27th has to be closed.
Either one, if we're going to have them do that work, 27th needs to close so that we can complete the sewer work and also remove and replace that road so that we don't have to continue to bother the residents at 27. The residents of 27, I think, have gone through this project for a very long time, I think.
I think everybody's gone a long time.
Right. I think more than anyone, they would like to be done. So I would like to do that for them if it is possible.
Okay. And we've had snow as early as Halloween. I've trick-or-treated with my kids in the snow. And we've had snow probably as late as Thanksgiving, and this hits both. So where would we be at if snow? And by the way, I did go to weather.com.
Thank you.
And it shows that Friday, November 3rd is a 40% chance of rain, and Saturday is 10%, 20%, 20%, 20%. Granted, we're a couple of weeks out, but there's a week's worth of rain. So then what does that do? What would they, they can't do asphalt in rain?
No, you cannot, you can't asphalt in the rain. For the areas that are open, you would not want areas that were open during the rain, so you'd want them to close those up as quickly as possible.
Okay, and then on snow? If a snowstorm, something happens and one of these days turns into a snowstorm?
My, from my understanding of the contract, the contractor is responsible for maintenance inside the work zone. He would be responsible for removing that, so I'm sure he would ask us for help. It would be easier to do with just the one lane of traffic than it would if both were up. But either way, we would be responsible to make it safe for the people, for the traffic to drive in.
And then, I think my final question is, if you zoom out on this map a little bit, so 3200 is in there, this is 27th and 70th. And there's an LDS church there on the corner, and then there's a Christian church on 32nd. So what happens on the Option 2, 28 days using flaggers? Is that just during Monday through Friday, and then they open up a second lane on the weekends? And are they going to have flaggers for the whole month, even on weekends?
Yeah. Again, they would only have flaggers on the days they were out working. If the flaggers weren't working, they would open it up to a lane each direction for safety because they wouldn't have it out there if they weren't working, so.
Okay, so 27th would be closed for a week regardless of the option. 70th South for Option 1 is westbound only, so eastbound. Are there any neighborhoods that are captive where they can only ingress and egress to their homes from 70th? Like, if I'm coming home from work, I get on, get off on 215 in Taylorsville and get to 70th South and Redwood, and then I can't go east, how do I get home if I'm blocked in?
From my knowledge, all of these neighborhoods do have other ways to get to their properties if they were coming westbound. And remember, westbound would stay open, and they would be able to get to their homes. If you were coming eastbound?
Right, I'm sorry. If I'm going to work, it'd be hard to go to work.
If you're going to work, right, you would probably use one of the other routes. There are other routes. They're not all locked, just on 70, on 70th South.
Okay, so there are no, between 27th and 32nd, there are no captive streets for residents that we would be preventing them?
That is my understanding. Again, same thing with this development. They can come out through this horseshoe and get to 27th and this neighborhood as well, and can get out and go to...
Over the one just north? The multi-unit there?
Multifamily? They have a connection into that neighborhood?
Just right there?
Just right here. And it goes through, and you're able to go here to this intersection and then out to 27th.
I'm glad you showed me what people would have to do for a month.
28 days or 14 days. If it's a month, then they would have flaggers, and they would be able to get in or out.
Okay.
So it's your choice. It's either going to be, you know, 14 days or the 28 days.
All right, that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Newton?
Greg, all of us are frustrated with how this has gone, and you too, I know. My question is this, in the original contract, were they supposed to keep it open for, do the 28-day deal? Was that part of the deal, or is this something new?
I think right here, this is brought on not because of, the closure part is to make it faster, if that's what your desire is, to help them, to have the project be done sooner and to have it be, well, just done sooner. The reason why they would use flaggers in this and not keep two directions of traffic open at all times is for safety. Their concern is for the safety of their workers and for the safety of the public. Because the sewer is placed so far to the north, on the other side of, to the north of the power that runs down the center, they only have about 15 feet from that sewer going to north for a lane of travel. They just don't have enough for two lanes of travel. And if they tried to put people on the other side of the sewer line that they have to have open to get to the laterals, plus their workers, plus the lateral work, there's just not, there's just room. So they're asking for this for safety reasons, not for contract reasons.
But this is nothing new. This has been known from the beginning, isn't, is that correct?
This is part of the design from the beginning. It's not a change in design.
So is there a financial advantage to them to do it in 14 days rather than the 28 days?
I'm sure there is.
I would like the council to propose that we charge them a certain amount for, if we go to 14 days, so, and otherwise, it's probably the best choice. But if there's a financial gain there, then we take that money and credit all these people along 70th South with their water bill for all the things they've had to put up with this last year. So that's an idea I'd like the council to consider.
Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick question for you, Greg. Did you say that there are two houses whose sewer is not hooked up?
That's not hooked up to the new sewer line. Thank you for correcting me there. There are two houses that are just west of the intersection at 27th that are connected to the old sewer line that we are replacing. They're not connected to the new sewer line. When they're connected to the new sewer line, we will abandon the old sewer line. So yes, they do have sewer service, but it's to be abandoned at a later date. Their new lateral has not been built, but they have an existing old lateral that still functions. Thank you. Sorry for...
I am really, really glad that's...
Sorry for the bad information.
No problem. Thanks.
I have one more question, Greg. Since it's been apparent on all fronts, this contractor hasn't, has underperformed on every deadline that they've set, and since we're not coming into spring in better weather, we're going into fall in worse weather, is the engineering staff confident that either of these will not get us in real trouble with inclement weather?
The difficult part of all of this is we're asked to look into the next 14 days or the next 28 days. I can't make any promises about what the weather will be in the next 14 or 28 days. We can certainly let the contractor know that we're not paying for extra repairs that would take place because they've decided to open a roadway up. But I can't make you any promises as far as, I can't make a promise honestly and still, you know, be back here 28 days and say I know what's going to happen in the future because I just don't.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted, Greg, I was kind of hard, and I want you to know it wasn't directed personally. I think all of us up here are extremely frustrated at the progress, or lack thereof, of 70th South. And so I just, I appreciate all that you do on 70th South. Thank you.
Councilmember Newton?
May I ask our inner city manager or city attorney, what if we don't do either one of these options? What does that mean legally for the contract?
At this point, it's one of convenience for them and one that they'd like to have some buy-in from city council. I will tell you, when presented with these two options, my initial reaction was because of the potential impact and the intent to make sure that the contractor stayed busy throughout the term of the contract. I was going to suggest 28 days. But the reality is, this community, that, those residents along 70th have paid a huge price this whole summer. My inclination is we recommend 14 days, move it along. I will tell you that we are enforcing the contract to the extent, most recently, as a result of their entry into the intersection on September 11th, 70th, and 27th, I insisted that Stanley notify them of the violations that they engaged in as a result of not having sidewalk prepared, people couldn't cross, they couldn't get to church. A very large bill has been handed to Knife River. They have recently pushed back. They're going to keep pushing back. But I think that's something that as a contractor, they should be giving the citizens what the citizens have paid for, and that's a top job. So knowing that they currently are already beginning to fight with us about what their payment should be, I'd like this council to tell them, get this job done. Do it now. Do it quickly.
Well, we've got you. What's the legal ramifications if they get into the 14-day window and we get snow that stays for the rest of the winter, and we've approved it? What's the legal ramifications?
If you would allow me, I would add one comment as to Councilmember Newton's question, and then I'll try to attempt to answer yours, Mayor. If we choose to do neither one of the options that are on the table, I think it could possibly give the contractor an argument that we are intentionally trying to prevent them from completing the work. That is, you know, one of the arguments that it could allow them if we don't do either one of them. As far as the issue with the weather and getting them, you know, if... I think ultimately, what will happen with those concerns, if they're delayed by the weather, it will be an issue of the liquidated damages that are at the end of the contract for the delays or, you know, if they haven't completed the contract in time, it'll be an issue of calculating the liquidated damages that are at the end of the contract.
Could I just rephrase that? I'm concerned about the legal ramifications for all the citizens that use this road to get to and from work that live along this roadway for the city. I really not concerned about the contractor at this point. I'm asking, what are the legal ramifications if we grant even a 14-day closure of this road, and we get in and inclement weather hits, which is possible? I mean, and I can't predict, and I don't want to predict, Greg Davenport doesn't want to predict either. But what are the legal ramifications if this city council approves either or of these, and we get a situation that these residents along this area have lived with since April? And now we've got a situation where the weather has taken over? What are the legal ramifications for the city?
Those citizens would probably give us notice. They'd be notifying Jared Smith as the impact if there are somebody who can't get into their driveway. They could potentially indicate to us what that damages look like. I will tell you that we will try to pass that damage along or assumption of liability to Knife River. I don't know if they'll agree. It is...
Have they paid for any of the damages we passed along yet?
No. But I can tell you, they've been fighting with us of late because we're standing up. The legal department, the engineers, I am doing what I can to hold these people's feet to the fire.
No, there's no question. I understand. I'm just concerned we're going into worse weather for sure than what we have been. Don't know when.
So to answer your question, someone who's damaged will make a claim against the city. We'll have to evaluate it. But if someone can't get in and out of their driveway, or if they're pulling out of their driveway and their chassis is damaged because of the depth, if someone can't get to a job interview because of it, I mean, it's terrifying.
Thank you. It's a hard question, I know, but I'm just concerned. Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. I think we need to do the best in the situation that we have presented before us. It would be really nice if we could go back a few months, but we can't. We are where we are, and I'm afraid that the 28 days is just going to make that problem real bad. Still a chance on the 14 days. Fortunately, the 14 days is the far side of the limit, not the short end. And at least for the first part of the foreseeable future, the weather will be in our favor. And if the weather changes, we'll have to just deal with what it is. So I am going to move to adopt Resolution 17-212, authorizing the staff to restrict traffic flow on 7,000 South and 27th West to 3,200 West for the 1 to 14 days.
Second for discussion. We have a motion by Councilmember Burton and a second by Councilmember Jacob. Discussion to the motion. Councilmember Jacob?
One quick question for Greg again. The residents along 70th South will have access to their homes?
At all times, they will have.
Regardless, at all times?
That is correct.
Thank you.
And even during bad weather, we would make sure the contractor made sure that... And even during bad weather, we would make sure the contractor made sure they had access to their homes.
Thank you, Mayor. So with the 14-day and knowing that there's at least forecasted a week of stormy weather as the last half of that, what ability do we have as a city to encourage them, Knife River, to have extra crews or work maybe extended hour, 12-hour shifts so they can beat that? Because my concern is if we have a week of rain, 40%, 20%, this 14 days, even though it's option one, ends up being 21 days or 28 days anyway.
I think if you look, they're having three crews help with the sewer laterals, and I can talk with them about extended hours during good times, because the trick is, in the 14 days, the sewer work they could probably do in inclement weather. We do that all the time. This project started in February where we had snowstorms and problems with. The difficulty comes for this particular part, when you excavate down to the subgrade, that's when it's, the road is most vulnerable. We'd want to make sure they built that back up as quickly as possible and not during inclement weather, because when you build a road and the subgrade's wet, it's impossible. So that's what we would have to do, is talk with them about how quickly they were, if they dig a hole, how quickly they fill that back, that hole back up.
And do they have all the supplies and parts that they need on site? It's not trying to order and hoping it comes in during the 14 days?
No, there is no special order items that they need to obtain for this work.
Okay, that's all I have.
Councilmember Newton.
I'm definitely for the 14 days because, just because of the situation we're in. But I do feel that they ought to pay for that, too. And I feel that we ought to give them the option, 14 days or 28 days, but if they take the 14 days, that they pay $50,000 in back charges. So we can either add that as an amendment, or I will vote no on this.
My concern with the amendment would be, if they choose option two then, we're stuck. And I don't want to give them that choice.
I can assure the council, I will be pushing for every penny dollar that this city and its residents are entitled to, to attach that type of rider motion or that request to the motion, I think might be interpreted by their legal staff as, and again, an effort to try to shut them down.
Even if we give them a choice? Even if we give them a choice?
I would rather give them the choice through the legal letter rather than a motion.
I'll back off then. I just, it's just so frustrating. I could use different language, but I won't. Thank you.
I will be voting against this motion. I think it's irresponsible. Everyone on the dais knows that they're not going to complete in 14 days. There's no chance. They haven't performed. They've underperformed on everything, every schedule they've put out since February. And I'm just concerned about inclement weather and the impact, again, to our residents, and especially since they're planning on starting Halloween night. That's not tomorrow, that's next week. So the 14-day starts then, and that puts you past the 15th at the very best with no storms. I think it's irresponsible to pass that. So I'll be voting against the motion.
Councilmember Burton.
Yes.
Mayor Rolf.
No.
Councilmember Jacob.
Yes.
Councilmember Newton.
Reluctantly, yes.
Councilmember Nichols.
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson.
I don't want to, but I'm going to vote yes.
The vote passes reluctantly, five to one.
I want to go on record that the north section of 2700 West was paved at 39 degrees. Our specification is 50 degrees and rising. Item 8E, discussion of possible action regarding the solid waste request for proposal process. David Bricky.
Thank you, Mayor, council. After our last council meeting, staff retreated the next day and sat down with ACE. Their representatives included their attorney. We had a very frank discussion about how we could proceed or what options might exist as far as proceeding with the current bid. There's some concerns that were raised after sitting down and talking with them, as well as sharing the concerns back with council for waste management. I think we have reached a resolution that is in the best interest of the community, the citizens. I'm going to ask Mr. Dodd to summarize what we're going to ask ultimately of the council, which is to reject the current bid and put out a new RFP. I'm going to ask Mr. Paul Dodd to explain that process.
Thank you. So what, the agreement that's been discussed and reached by the parties is that if the council votes to reject all proposals and to issue a new RFP, that ACE management would be willing to enter into a four-month extension of the current contract that we have with them. That would allow the city to have enough time to issue the new RFP, to award a contract on the RFP, and allow whichever entity was awarded the contract the appropriate enough time to be able to obtain all of the trucks and equipment that they would need to then begin the contract on July 1st. All the parties have agreed that that timeframe would work for them, and we anticipate that we would have what the council wanted, would be more proposals that would be deemed, that would meet the criteria. And we anticipate that we would have at least three proposals if we go that route and we have more competition in that, which is what, one of the, I know one of the things the council was really looking to have, is to have more competition in the RFP process. Also, so that's my understanding of how we would proceed. If the council did go ahead and reject all bids, then we would immediately try to issue a new RFP within, hopefully within the week, and hope to have a contract awarded by the end of the year. And that would allow whoever prevails to have six months to be ready to perform that contract.
Interject and just indicate that the new RFP would be different in length. It would involve a different type of service. We're going to add some requests that were not previously in the last RFP. The RFP also was judged by four individuals. Those four individuals would not participate in this next evaluation, and the prior scoring sheets would simply be torn up, thrown away, and not considered. You would have also identified in the new RFP, five individuals who will be given notice that they cannot contact or socialize, fraternize with the potential applicants. Having done so, they would be eliminated from the chance to participate in the scoring. So we're going to do this in a way that the public has confidence that it was done fairly and the citizens get an effective provider for this service. If you have questions about that, please let me know now what they might be, so we can talk about it before you make a vote, take a vote.
I move to reject all bids from the solid waste request for proposal process.
Conditioned on that, a new RFP is issued within a week to 10 days and a new process completely installed with that new RFP, if I could add that to the language.
I would accept that as the language of the motion.
Three days?
A second.
How many days to submit the RFP? Okay.
Motion by Mayor Rolf, a second by councilmember Burton. Discussion to the motion. Seeing on this vote? Chad, did I miss something, Chad? Sorry. Councilmember Nichols? Okay.
No, I'm good.
Let's vote.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob.
Yes.
Mayor Rolf.
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols.
Yes.
Councilmember Burton.
Yes.
Councilmember Newton.
Aye.
The vote passes six in favor.
I'm going to just ask if there's anyone on staff or on the council that has something that they would, we skipped over the communications that they need to, other than myself. I do have one question, and I'll start, and then I'll turn it over to whoever. The question is, on the 15th day of the extension that we just allowed for them to close the road, what happens? I mean, the citizens are going to be asking me that question. They're going to ask me that the first day it gets closed, but on the 15th day, what happens? I have to have an answer. Is it liquidated damages at that point if we grant them this?
Part of the challenge has always been that the two sides have, because of change orders and dates changing, and even this current change number six still pending, we've, in fact, at the meeting today, I made it very clear to Stanley, I need a date. I need, the council's frustrated, the community's frustrated, I want a date. Give me that change order so I can tell people what is going to happen. I know that's frustrating, Mayor, to tell you. I wish I could tell you with certainty. I will work to give you a written response that you can provide your community, your citizens who ask that. I will work on getting that prepared and ready for you by the end of the week.
But certainly, the contract time for 2B can't go beyond the 15th of November, even with a new change order, because it was supposed to be done on the 31st with the change order that have been processed.
There are at least 15 days that I saw on a change order that's been requested, and so far, we've been pushing back on that. But if the 15th of November included the 15 days that have that change order, that would put us to November 30th.
The change orders that have been processed to date are October 31st is the date. There is a change order that I understand that the council hasn't seen and evidently you haven't seen. If that has 15 days on it, that would extend the time to November 15th. And we haven't accepted that timeframe, right?
That is correct.
And we're only talking about 2B now.
Correct.
I still believe that the contract time for 2A was September 24th. That's my opinion. I'll wait for your legal opinion on that.
Thank you, sir.
No, it's October 24th for A and October 31st for B with the change orders that have been processed to date. Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let the council and staff know that I will likely be not in attendance for the next two meetings, the two meetings in November. They both happen to fall on family conflict dates. So I apologize. I will try to make it to either one if things work out that way, but I very likely will miss both meetings in November.
You won't be attending electronically either?
No.
Okay. Thanks. Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to follow up from your question to the, David Bricky.
I'm sorry?
So to follow up after on the mayor's question, if they don't complete this in the 14 days, can we, may we have our city crews come in and take over at least that part at that time because they didn't complete it in the days we gave them?
We certainly could, and then we would charge back to them the cost that the city incurred for having our staff do that, for materials. That is one of, that's one of the realities that we've been asking that Knife River be advised of.
I would like to proceed that way on that part of the project, at least. Anyone from staff that has something? Is he Chief McElree?
Yeah, I just wanted to update the council and those that are still left here. As you might have seen in the news last week, we got a call, I think it was last Friday, California looking for requests for firefighters to go to California. It was probably about noon time. I got ahold of Mr. Bricky, Mr. Wall, and I believe somebody from the council was in the meeting on the conference call. I got the okay to put our name out there, that we could go and help, and I wanted to say thank you to all the staff that helped make that possible. It took a lot of, from finance, payroll, our fleet department, but we successfully, in about 12 hours, had four firefighters on a fire engine along with 30 other units from Salt Lake County, Utah County, that deployed to California. As you might have saw in the news as well, they were there about eight days, and then they got released. So just as some background to what happened is, we got down there, all of California's resources and everything else they had were already committed. Our crews were there to go and backfill those communities that didn't have fire protection and also if any other new fires started up. Luckily, none of that occurred, and they got there, done a lot of training, and got back home safely last Saturday, on Saturday. So I think it's, it was a great show that we could mobilize people and get them out to help California. California is reimbursing for all of our costs, including the backfill. We had, our staffing did not suffer in the city during those eight days. So it was a good event, and to know that the statewide mutual aid system works, if we ever needed something like that, we would be, you know, looking for that. So just wanted to brief the council on that and those that are here and say thank you for allowing. Our four people that went were excited to go and thought it was a great opportunity. So thank you.
Anyone else have anything to add tonight?
I have nothing to add, and if, do not add anything other than say thank you, let's get out of here.
Need a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion by councilmember Burton, a second by councilmember Jacob. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.